Some of. So move, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, uh my name is Joe Bilbury. I live on Ray Hill Rose. My wife Krista. Married for twenty six years, have five children. We've been living there since two thousand nine, I wanna say, um think that's what she told me anyways. I don't remember the exact date, but um we raised five children there. They're all all grown now, uh every one of them. Uh I talked to, this is you Mike, right? Yep, I talked to you and I talked to Ms. Good, is good, is that how you pronounce it? And then, of course, the mayor. I appreciate all y'alls uh talking to me, cuz I expected quick phone calls. Each one of you stayed on the line with me for a long time and gave me a lot of information. I appreciate that. And uh Mr. Mayor invited me to come talk today, so I don't know um what I'm expecting to to accomplish, but it but maybe just pick y'all's brain a little bit. Uh so. Um a couple of years ago, my dad's health started deteriorating. We, my wife and I thought, you know, he can't live on his own, so we thought we would get a maybe, you know, tiny house or something to put on our property. We have just over an acre there on Ray Hill Road. Um it didn't work out. There was like a, you, maybe you know, there's like a two and a half year waiting list on these tiny homes. Uh the ones that we were looking at, cuz there was, they were such quality. And so we decided to just not do that. He was deteriorating too quickly. We put him in a nursing home. He died uh earlier this year. But then we thought, hey, how about we uh, we still do this because our kids are all grown. We have grandkids now. And they can come and they can visit and stay in the, in the, in the tiny house while we're, while they're visiting. It'll be more room. Uh by the way, our house is just twelve hundred square feet. We raised five kids in that little, little place and it was fine. But now they're bigger and now they were not, they have kids and, or some of them have kids. And so we thought, what a great thing to do. So we kinda just started moving ahead with it. I think I got confused cuz I don't, I've never done this before. So I thought kinda um that we had kinda the go ahead. And so I um I put in a um, an application to to get it, a permit. And I guess I received a a a no-go on it, but I never could find it on the website. So I just, I just applied for it again. That's when I got a call from uh uh Mike's um coworker. I can't think of his name. Kevin, and he told me, I'm sorry, you didn't get approved for that. And that's when it shot down, cuz I'd already, we already put half down on this uh building. So um uh anyway, um so we started thinking, you know, there's gotta be a way that we could make this work. I mean, it's, it's an acre, just a little house that's on it now. We gotta be able to somehow make this work. And I understand that the uh, the zoning was made so that uh, it's, so that uh, we didn't have too, too many people here and and to. So it wasn't too crowded in Mills River with too many houses. And I get that. This isn't, uh this is a, is, is like I said, just under, or just over an acre. And we have a small house on it now. It seems like there's plenty of room for another small dwellings. We ha- actually have a bunch of sheds in the, in the down part that are old from the previous owner that are just slapped together. We wanna tear those down and and, you know, use that area too for, for that. But um it seems that, that we don't have quite enough acreage to put this, and so that's why we got uh shut down. So I guess the, the reason I'm here is just to ask if, if um, if you're looking at maybe changing that to, to, to less acreage, or if maybe there's some other al- alternate way that I'm not thinking of. Cuz I'd still like to, I haven't canceled the, the order on that house. Um because I, 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 I'm still hoping that there's maybe a possibility that we can still find some way to make this work. It's um, it's a, it's not a permanent structure technically. So I, I, I know it still falls under the, the dwelling, the uh dwelling thing. But I don't know if that's something that could be, I, I don't know if that's something that could be worked with or could be more specific. Or, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just here really kinda asking for help or questions, see if that's, it's something that can possibly be done or, or something. I just gotta cut my losses and go some other direction.
Yeah, so Mister, Mister Philbury and I have spoken on the phone about this. Um what we traditionally call these smaller cottages, tiny homes that serve as a permanent dwelling on a lot, which usually means connected to permanent utilities. They're considered accessory dwellings, or that's how a lot of other zoning codes um define them. Usually with accessory dwellings, there are limitations on size. Uh an example, no bigger than eight hundred square feet, no bigger than twenty percent of the single-family home, the primary home on the parcel. Um so there are limitations that can be put in place, but right now, it's not even defined in our code. Our code doesn't even consider it. Because of that, and because uh Mister Bilbury's ac- application included, I think, a septic uh field, which would be a permanent utility, we have to consider it a full dwelling, just like a normal house. Um and the residential density requirement applies one dwelling per thirty thousand square feet, which is the minimum lot size, and that's one dwelling per point six nine acres. So in theory, you have to have one point three eight acres in Mills River to have two dwellings on it. And that could either be two full single-family homes or a single-family home and a, even a three hundred square foot cottage. As long, you know, as long as that is a separate dwelling with a separate address, with its own um permanent utilities, that's how we have to permit it. And unfortunately, in his situation, he didn't have the, the enough acreage to meet that requirement, so we had to, to deny the permit.
And I spoke with him to Jackie and, and back in the day in two thousand and four and beyond, before that, when they looked at developing these lot sizes, there's basically no sewer or water out here at that point. Um so, um, at talking to the health department, they said, you know, what is a good lot? That they can get their well within thirty-five foot of the house and more than fifty foot from the septic and still be able to fit a eighteen hundred, two thousand square foot house in there somewhere. And they said it's gonna have to be a half acre or bigger to even make it fit. And that was for a three-bedroom. Uh so, you know, like I said today, y- you know, you, you might still have an issue even if you got granted permission from us, because I don't think they're gonna let you hook it to your existing septic unless you add another line or something to that effect. Um so you might have other issues too. Uh anybody else got anything?
Well, I live on Ray Hill also and um, so when we built our house, the ground down from that area doesn't perfect very much. So I had to put holes all over on a four-acre lot just to find the, uh, drain bill for my septic. So I'm, I, I don't know what Shannon's calling about here, so it's gonna be less than a half, around a half acre and expect to help department get a drainage and land repair area on that, that amount of space. I don't, I don't know. I think we don't have.
Okay.
That's all I've got on that part.
The only other thing I'll add, and just as I uh spoke to Councilwoman Good about this morning, um, we have seen more requests for this, you know, um people with aging parents um want them to be on the property with them. So it, it's something we've seen increasing, but a- again, unfortunately, with staff administrative approvals, as I told Mister uh Bilbury, there's, there's really no way around this without a code change. So um that's why I passed on, you know, some of our officials' information um to see if he could basically ask council, if council would be willing to incorporate accessory dwellings into the code. Um but that's not something that's in there. That's not something it considers at this time.
There's nothing to stop somebody from adding on to their existing house.
That's correct. So and, and that's what I've suggested to other folks on the, on the phone that have been in those situations is to do a building addition. Um unfortunately, in his situation, you, you've already put the deposit down on a tiny home, so, yeah.
Is some city water available out there?
I don't believe so.
Anybody got anything else?
Um I've, I've inquired about it, but um no one's selling right now. Okay, well, thank y'all for your, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh moving on, uh approval of the consent agenda, my motion please, someone.
I'll make the motion to approve this agenda.
Thank you, Randy. Second?
I'll second it.
Let's send it, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh regular agenda, the public hearing. Uh TXT twenty-three.
Oh, one, this will go.
Need someone to put us in to uh this public hearing, please.
Was this a new public hearing or is this like?
No, it's a new public.
I'll make motion with one other team. TXT twenty-three, one.
A second, please.
I'll second the motion.
Thanks, Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, uh, is any council member getting in conflict of interest to this? Here, no? Uh, we'll get, who's gonna present? Michael or?
Uh yes, Mister May, I will recognize Mike Malachek, our planning director, to carry you through this one.
Uh good evening, council members. So um back at, looking at conditional zoning for the second time. So again, just a quick recap for everyone listening. This started March of this year at the visioning session where council requested to begin the text amendment. Uh planning board looked at that at two meetings in April and May and recommended approval. And then council had their public hearing June eighth of this year. Um at that meeting, there was consensus to remove lot size and density as a negotiable um standard in the ordinance. And then uh council also directed the planning board to take a look at the minimum acreage required to even be able to apply for the process. Uh so planning board reviewed that in August. They recommended minimum, minimum parcel size or minimum acreage uh for two acres. Um and basically recommended it for approval. And again, the two acres is in addition to the future land use map district qualifiers. Uh just noting, the public hearing has been properly noticed. We had newspaper ads in the lightning on August thirtieth and the sixth. Um I'm happy to review conditional zoning again, if it, if you'd like me to. But um since we've heard it a couple of times, I'm gonna skip over that. I did just wanna go through the ordinance real quickly and highlight some of the changes since we've been through this a few times. Um and also staff did a little bit of a closer review after your packets were sent out. And we found a couple other places where lot size and density were mentioned. Um so i- if you do move to adopt this tonight, I would ask that you do that with modifications, and I'll call those out right now. So on line fifty-five, on the first uh page of the main part of the ordinance, uh that section reads uh conditional zoning is to, and it says, allow greater freedom and, freedom and providing a mix of land uses in the same development, including a mix of housing types, lot sizes, densities, et cetera. And so again, if council adopts, um I would make a recommendation that we just strike those two words, lot sizes and densities from line fifty-five. The rest of the changes uh staff has made in this version are highlighted. So you can see uh line sixty to sixty-three have been struck um that specifically talks about um using density and lot size um for different types of development. So that was taken out. Uh line seventy-six, we have the subject property to- total acreage requirement of two acres. Uh and then one thing staff added in, uh because in our one-on-one and uh group meetings before we went into the public hearing, I heard uh from some council members that eventually we'd like to move some of our special use permit uh developments like multifamily, tiny home parks to be rerouted through conditional zoning. So one thing I wanted to incorporate in here now are the base allowances for density and lot size that our zoning ordinance currently allows, again, through special use permits. So ninety-eight, line ninety-eight through one oh seven, that's what that section is. It basically states, um again, resident, residential density must adhere to one dwelling unit per thirty thousand square feet for single-family developments. And then four dwelling units per acre for multifamily, tiny home parks, park model parks and RV parks. Um and then minimum lot size, again, must adhere to the town requirement of thirty thousand square feet for detached single-family, twenty thousand square feet for single-family residential cluster developments and planned residential developments. And that is in the special provisions or special development type uh section of the zoning code. And again, those all require major special use permits. But if we are gonna move to eventually have those development types apply through this process, it's s- smart to incorporate it now. Um moving on, uh one of the main points, um one sixteen and one seventeen, again, conditional zoning districts may allow for modification of any or all of the following lot size and density have been struck from that list. And then one last item we caught is on line three oh six, so a few pages forward. Um this is in the plan development requirements. Um so under, again, line three oh six, it's under uh bullet point five. It basically states for plans that existing topography and finished grading with contours drawn at two foot, two-foot intervals is required, but it can be waived for developments smaller than an acre. That's no longer gonna happen because we're requiring two acre minimum. Um so I'm just suggesting we strike out uh the word smaller than one acre and, and leave in uh the last part of the sentence, um because again, if there is a flat lot that's completely flat, we don't, they don't need to do that work. I believe that's the summary of the changes I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh, sorry, one more thing I did wanna point out. It's a little crudely drawn, but in attachment E in your packet, it's basically a scanned version of our future land use map. And um I didn't have time to do it digitally, but I went through and basically identified all the parcels that would meet the two acre requirement. Um and so you can see some of the parcels that again are just a little too small. Um but those are the areas um that basically would be able to qualify for this process in the specific future land use map districts. And that's all I have for you.
Uh, any question for Michael or any staff?
Here and then? Uh go ahead. I have, just for clarification, currently the draft before us of what we currently allow through special use, that allows four units per acre, that remains unless we change it and br- bring it under this conditional zoning?
Correct. So if I were to apply for a multifamily development now with major special use permit, um the zoning ordinance allows four units an acre. And so I just basically copied and pasted that over, unless council wishes something different.
Michael, what do you, what do you do then? Know when everybody's trying, lot size and density, it takes arrows out of your quiver and trying to negotiate development. So what do you see? What do you see developer coming in the morning, give shade on, with the condition going, have them, if we pass the package?
I think the, the largest effect it will have is allowing true mixed-use developments. So right now, there's really no part of the zoning code that allows you to develop a property for commercial and residential. Um this does allow for a mix of uses. Um we did leave, you know, building size, building height um in there as well, building a setback. So again, um if there were a challenging site where someone wanted to do some innovative design, that again, our zoning ordinance doesn't take into account, that could, you know, could at least be considered through this process. Um but, but you're right, without lot size and density, um it, it limits, you know, what can be negotiated for um and what will be varied.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cuz I think we need to, whenever we start something like this, I think it needs to be baby steps before we, before we jump. Paulie, on. So clarify for me, please, if you, so if I do a mixed-use development somewhere here in the town river and have a building with commercial space on the bottom and, and some residential on top of it. So the resid- each residential unit will ha- they will have to have as much property to equal twenty thousand square feet for each one of the residential, with, spread.
Well, it, in the specific building type you're talking about, that would be considered multifamily, cuz you're gonna have more than three units in a building, so it would be the four units an acre.
That.
But if, if you're talking.
Twenty thousand square feet. No.
No.
Would be.
Because.
Ten thousand.
No, but multifamily has no lot size requirement. So like the town home development off Jeff Ross, um i- if you read through the special use permit process for multifamily, it specifically says um they are exempt from lot size requirements. Because the way um the developer, you know, sells or leases the units, the lot lines are drawn at the building wall envelope. Does the, does the, the units draw connected?
Even discussing this uh conditional zoning, um I kept thinking back to Jeff Ross Road Town Homes and cuz it was basically allowed by right. They checked all the boxes and once they had, if there was no impact to health, safety of the residents, you know, we were, had no option to uh, to deny it or really force much change. You know, we got a little bit of help for neighboring landowner. That being said, I was hoping that this conditional zoning would also address that where we could actually ask for additional accommodations to make it more suitable for the area that's planned. So I don't know about the remaining of the council, but in particular, the uh, the uh single-family residential cluster was the one that I, I'd like to see pulled into the conditional zone. I'll be bringing them all in at one time, the RV parks and tiny home parks and these type of things too, but, but. I just don't wanna be, go through what we did with Jeff Ross Road Town Homes again, where basically we could do nothing cuz they uh, they hit all the high points on special use and uh we just had rubber standard.
What's your uh take on that?
So um requiring those different development types to go through this process, my thought was first we have to establish the process, um so that would be where we are now. And then if council wishes, you could, you know, ask me to initiate a text amendment to change those other parts of the code. Cuz again, they're in the special provisions part of the zoning code, so it is a whole different section that would require different notice, different, you know, another planning board review and all that. Um so again, if that's what council wishes, I would recommend we adopt this. And then again, if, if you don't want a leeway, charge me with taking that on as the next text amendment to basically direct all those developments into this process.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Please go.
Okay. So give me an example, if we pull in, as you suggested, like the uh tiny home park, mu- multifamily development. Give me an example of what it would look like if we pull those in to this one.
So believe it or not, I've, there's already a development group that's considering doing a conditional zoning for a multifamily development. Um one thing they're looking at varying from is our standard multifamily code, uh I think has uh building dimensional limits. So I think for the townhomes, and I might be wrong, the buildings couldn't be longer than two hundred feet, something like that. Um this developer is possibly looking at, you know, maybe doing a three hundred foot, three hundred and fifty foot long building, so a, a larger footprint. But again, a- and I can't go into details, you know, in order to have less impacts on the rest of the site, you know, possibly due to streams, topography issues, et cetera. But again, the, the positive of conditional zoning, as we talked about in the last meeting, is you could have one resident come out and say, this isn't for Mills River, and that's enough to deny it.
So. First line ninety-eight, uh one oh, so. Because it's in here does not mean it's by right. You can still put four dwelling units for a, number multifamily. That's, would be negotiable now or that is the minimum?
That's the limit.
That's the maximum.
Maximum. So you could not, you could not go above four units an acre. But again, with a conditional rezoning application, in theory, um everything is on the table. I see. So you're saying because we've removed density from something that can be modified, you're saying, could you ask for three units an acre? I think you could. I mean, I thi- I think if you wanted to be clear about that, you could put density back on uh on line one seventeen, the list of items that could be modified, but just state um four units an acre or less.
Or less. Did, did anybody coming in and want? Or density, um like you said, they were allowed four a, four per acre, no one to, to three per acre.
It's possible.
It would have to be a topo issue.
Yeah. I think, I think it's possible. I mean, again, depending upon property size and all these other factors, you know, there may be a situation where a developer does want a couple larger buildings with more units in them, which again is gonna result in, I think, lower construction costs, cuz, you know, you're building fewer structures, even though they're a little more complicated in each. Um but where due to site constraints, again, perennial streams, ponds, topo, whatever it may be, um there's just not enough room or flood plain, there's not enough room for them to develop in other places. Um so maybe they do end up at three point six units an acre. Um in writing this, I didn't envision that they had to do four units an acre. It was the um, those are the base standards. Even for multifamily now, four units an acre is the maximum, but we wouldn't demand that from an applicant.
Right. Anything else?
Without name names, obviously, is there a long list of people who are waiting for us to do this or a short list?
No, it's one group that's been following this process since the spring.
Let's move along a little bit and see if uh anyone, any interested parties out there wants to give us any input into this, any audience? Here and n- none. Um. Any public comment? So, welcome to come up if you like. So, any additional questions now?
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, what's been drafted up and what's come from the planning board. However, I do think, um, or I'd like to see the town revisit some of these special use um developments and see if they can't be better managed, that's not the right word, but um, and, you know, defer to staff, if that's a better way. It seems like there's a better way than special use permits to handle some of these other special developments and uh, um, you know, I don't wanna draft anything on the fly tonight, but I did the whole, when we started this process early in the calendar year, I, I was thinking about specifically the townhomes. And I, I'd like to see that process change where um we have a little more give and take as a town before we green light a, a project like that. I don't know if Mister Malachek has any opinion, or you don't have to share it if you want, but if, if that's a better way to, to handle some of those developments as opposed to our special use process that's currently in our ordinance.
It's really up to council. It's really up to council. Yeah, um. Again, you're, you're going to have a little more flexibility, um. And what you can do with a developer with those, but I mean, if you want to start with one, I think multifamily makes the most sense. Um, the one thing I would caution is, um, you know, manufactured home parks are one of the few avenues we have for affordable housing in the town and. Um, I know they do have impacts, but I wouldn't want to make that bar too high. Um, so I, I would just say, you know, in, in the interest of the cop plan and. Again, no one's applied for one since I've been here, but, um. I would even think of maybe lowering that bar. So, you know, we do have some affordable housing in the town. Uh, that's not, you know, McMansions and Mills River Crossing, but multifamily seems, seems to be the most reasonable place to start to direct it to conditional zoning.
Well, my whole. Just, just concerns. I agree. Would it be, would it be beneficial for us to go ahead and start this process as this forward now? Then charge you and the planning board to come up with some. Guidelines or something that would. Do at a later day, then I address what Jeff is speaking about. That's what we'll do about it every week. Do we hold on?
No, I, I would adopt. I mean, sorry, if it's your pleasure and if you're comfortable with this, I would put it in place tonight. Um, and then again, I mean, at the end of the council meeting, even as long as there's consensus to direct me to. Start a text amendment process, that doesn't mean we have to go through it immediately. Um, and it may not be at the next planning board meeting, because there's a couple other items coming before them. But that at least gives me the, the comfort and, um, you know, support of council to start that process and drafting. You know, just drafting something for the planning board to look at. And again, if you'd like it to be a discussion item at a future meeting, um, we can bring something before you then as well.
I asked one thing. So I know that you've been involved in this process for a long time, so, um. I'd like for this to go forward, like I said, in baby steps, but. Especially if we didn't decide to. Adopt. Is this, uh, baby steps? For conditional zoning or?
I think by taking lot size and density out of it, you take most of the teeth out of it, if that's a proper response.
That's what I've been. Thank you.
I've read through it and. I appreciate everything that the planning board put into it. Um, sometimes it's hard to hear them on the mob. But, you know, I, I listen to what I can hear and. They've answered a lot of my questions. Michael's answered a lot of my questions and the questions y'all have asked have answered a lot of my questions. The one thing I do appreciate out of it most is that it does give the residents a say so. And. It makes it more community friendly.
Thank you.
James?
One thing is basically we need to. Charge who do. Well, in your opinion, do we, we should be charging you to strike other things because basically. This is good, but if I'm a developer, I can, I have now two ways to go about getting my way.
Regarding special use permits? Until that section of the codes changed, you're correct.
Jeff, if you get anything else? There's nothing that says we could table this. Point and wait. See if some of these concerns can be addressed to them. Right?
Say the last part, someone's concerned is.
Some of the concerns. Be addressed. The, I mean, would it do that? But the, the option for a special use permit is still out there. So we change the code.
Correct.
Yeah, I think we get this in play. And go ahead and tell him to start, so they can work on fixing them to get the. The multifamily role. And get planning board working on it when they get called up and then try to get it in here and then we see how that does for a while.
And, and I'll just say, if, if you want it expedited, if that's important, I can do that. I mean. And that would be. It's, it's, it's really not, if we're just looking at multifamily to start, it's. It's not a whole lot of text change. It's really removing the special use permit references and then referencing this, which is why this has to be in place, because I would have to reference it.
Right.
Any, any, any other questions? Not all. Ask for a motion to close the public here. Motion to close the public. Thank you, Randy. Uh, second?
I second the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. All right, uh, uh, any discussion? Here none? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay. So now we'll probably need a little help. If, uh, someone would like to make a motion to, uh. Adopt this additional zoning or deny it or whatever y'all's wishes.
And if I can just chime in one more time, i- if you do move to adopt, um, please don't forget to. Adopt with modifications, striking lot size and density from line fifty five. And smaller than one acre from line three oh six.
You offer a lot of size and density in line.
Uh, those have been struck in the current version already.
Yeah, uh, it'll need, if, if it's going through, we need it to say, um. Fifty five and three oh six would be struck, um.
I'll make a stab at it and move that. We approve the text amendment for revised, excuse me, conditional zoning, TXT twenty three dash zero one. In addition, or with modifications, including, uh, striking lot size and densities from line fifty five. As well as striking a less than one acre from line number three oh six.
Okay, I got a first, uh, someone want to second that? Randy's second. Any discussion? None? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Here none. Okay. Good. All right, we'll move.
Before you move on, sorry.
Sorry.
This consistency statement needs to be adopted. It's a attachment C.
Who wants this, who wants to do that one for us? Huh? Chip. Oh, you remember how it reads, Jeff? I can't even remember how it reads.
The, the motion would just need to say adopting the statement of consistency for the text amendment as presented, if you're comfortable with that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the statement of consistency. As presented.
Thank you. Uh, second? Senator's second. Okay, and that is for zoning text amendment twenty three oh one's, uh, conditional zoning. Okay.
Yes, it is.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Hey. We get it now, Mr. Malcheck.
Thank you, sir.
All right, whenever we get caught up, we'll move on to the land preservation program update.
Good. Okay. So Mayor and Council, this evening, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the work of the land preservation committee. We've been meeting for the last several months. And have, uh, more or less finalized a scoring system that can be used to, um, it's sort of, it's, uh, the idea is that it's data driven the, for the first part. So. Based on your acreage, how close you are to utilities, if you're on a major road, the size of your property. So you get. Bottom line score that you can then rank applicants. The idea being, um, uh, someone submits an application, we score it. It goes to a committee for review and then recommendations provided to the full council for a decision. And what we are envisioning is that the town would participate, um, at some sort of partnership. Where the town does not have the funds, uh, to actually purchase development easements, but it might be able to help cover the costs of the transaction. So. Appraisals or surveys or attorney's fees, something of that nature. Um, so we've been, we've been talking through those details, uh, the last couple of months and then. We have a meeting on the twenty sixth and we've got a couple of different folks coming, uh, some experts. Kieran Rowe and Tom Fanslow from conserving Carolina are both going to attend on the twenty sixth. To talk about, um, their roles and offer their feedback, um, as far as conservation easements go from a land trust's perspective. And then we also have Jeff Darnell from the Department of Agriculture and the Consumer Sciences. Uh, and he's trying to get someone from Raleigh to come up as well to talk about, uh, things at the state level. So we're moving, we're moving forward, uh, making good progress, I think. Uh, Randy or James, you guys want to add anything that I didn't touch on?
No, thank you. And. Short process. But, uh. It's always a little bit naive. Maybe as, uh. Covering it. Most all scenarios in face. So, um, it will take a little longer than what we.
Thank. Okay. Okay.
Through, uh. The whole consensus convention.
Okay. Awesome. The last thing I'll mention is that, um, Henderson County is actually entertaining a presentation next Wednesday at their regular meeting about farmland preservation. So I, I invite any of you to attend. I'll be there to listen to that as well.
That's what I. Evening meeting or morning?
That's the morning meeting, nine, nine o'clock. The courthouse, old courthouse.
Okay. All right, anything else? Not one moving on. Reappointment of Jason Davis, uh, the two-year term. Looks like it's ending October tenth.
So Jason Davis has served on the ag advisory committee since two thousand thirteen. His current term expires October tenth, twenty twenty-three. He's a dedicated member and, um, he's expressed interest in continuing. You have no other applications on file.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions about it? I would about say Jeff, he's probably one of the biggest farmers we got in Mills River now, ain't he?
Yeah, and he used to be the youngest.
Who come in, who's, who else is out there now?
James Camp.
That's that guy? Oh, okay. Okay, good deal.
But no, he's a tremendous asset for the ag committee and. In saying that, I, I move that we re-point Jason Davis to another, uh, term on the agriculture advisory committee.
Uh, okay, you got a first, second? Randy's second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Here none. Okay, uh, ABC permit discussion item.
Mr. Mayor and Council, last week, uh, Councilman Good and I had a conversation about, um. ABC permits and permitting of businesses and, um, the, the number of them in town. And we've been looking into some options, um, if council wants to look at that in terms of any sort of limitations or anything like that. Um, so we're prepared to have that discussion tonight. Sandra, is there anything you'd like to add to, to go, to go off the conversation?
Well. I had talked to Daniel before, um. When they were looking at. It just permitted the new. It said over on Mills, Mills River Road and. I didn't know anything about it. I didn't know if council did or not. So I found out about this on Facebook. I screenshotted it. And that was back in twenty-two when they first did groundbreaking. And I asked Daniel, is this true? And he said, oh, yeah, they permitted it several months ago before that. And I said, you know, well, would it be feasible that, um. You know, council was aware of, you know, where breweries are going. And would it, how many do we need? Cause I've had a lot of people ask me, why do we need another brewery? So I said, well, let's ask council about it and see what they think.
Okay, um. My opinion of that be like somebody asking, how many builders do we need? They're probably just trying to make a living. Uh, you can say it about churches, you can say it about government, you can say it about anything. It's kind of opinionated really. Uh, when they first come in here. Uh, Sharon and Vada, I mean, it was a big stink about how bad it was going to be for Mills River. And Mr. Player sitting over there, I don't think we have any issues with them. And this is coming from a guy that don't drink. I don't think we have any issues to amount to anything. So.
Well, instead of adding two and getting so many, why don't we take care of the ones we've got? And. I don't drink, so I don't really go to them. I don't know. The only issue I have is driving down two eighty. For some reason, people like to cut you off there. Where you turn on to one ninety-one by the. Gas station. And. After about the fifteenth time that happened, I thought, well, now where are these people going? So I thought, well, we'll just ride this way to go where I'm going and I'll go to one. You know, which. That's okay. They're just racing really hard to get there.
Got you.
So, you know, obviously they're popular, they're doing good and the town does make money. When I've had people complain to me about them, you know, I try to put the best spin I can on it, say, well, every time they pour a drink, town makes money. But then they keep saying, you know, how many more do we need? So I thought, well, let's see if there's any way we could address that.
Okay.
Oh.
Sure.
Like about ABC permits in general, like how do we know about that? Is that a town thing and county thing? I like Googled it real quick, but.
Yeah. So we're, we're involved, but I'm going to let Mr. Malcheck give you the details on how that actually works.
That's not mentioned in the code at all. So. Uh, I think it was like six months after I started here, the first ABC permit came forward and, I mean, there really is no process. Um, what happens or no standardized process in town code for how to handle it. So what happens is, uh, someone applies with the state alcoholic beverage commission. And there are two local approvals, you could call them, that are needed. There's a local government opinion form and you can actually, I believe, look up on the ABC website. Uh, the mayor of the town in Mills River is the designated approving official, you can call it, for ABC permits. And then there is a, a local zoning and inspection compliance form, um. The county does charge for that. And so the building inspector goes out, makes sure the building is, you know, has the correct safety, occupancy, et cetera. Fire marshal goes out, does he, his inspection, and then I'm the last one to go out and I do my inspection. Fire marshal goes out, does his inspection, and then I'm the last one to go out, and I do my inspection. And if the property is compliant with our codes, I sign on my line, just like all the previous inspectors do, and that paperwork is returned to ABC in Raleigh, I assume. But there is no standardized process, we don't charge for it. Really, it starts with a phone call or an email, and a lot of people don't even know about the process. And so, now I've saved those forms on my computer, and I usually say, here's what you need. You need to start with the county, and then give us your information. And I think, I work with Sue, and usually, I think we just put it in the mayor's folder.
So, the mayor's the one that signs off on it?
Correct.
Okay.
Time thing, like yearly thing, like?
How do you? One time.
One time. And. As long as I, as long as I stay in compliance.
Well, we're obviously not doing the testing or whatever. That's all, and let's say, that's just. Basically, if they meet the building zoning and.
We're good. So, yeah, yeah. If it's, if there's a, a change in name or ownership, I think they have to redo their.
That's right. That's right.
Yep.
And the state does have other factors. I did do some research, if you want to hear it. Basically, the ABC commission makes sure that the actual applicant is a suitable person to hold a permit for beverage, alcoholic beverage sales. So, they, excuse me, they take into consideration the reputation, character, and criminal record of the applicant. They do look at zoning laws, the neighborhood parking facilities, traffic conditions, the recommendations of the local governing body, which would be the local government opinion form. And then, whether the operation of the business would be detrimental to the neighborhood. So, again, looking at past revocations, suspensions, or violation of ABC laws or protocols. But one thing I did find is that although this general statute has been changed over time to provide more local input, the commission has the sole authority to do what they want. And I could say no, and the mayor could say no, and the commission could still approve it per state law.
And, go ahead.
As long as they have like a brewery, as long as they have a restaurant inside, they can serve alcohol too, liquor, by the green.
There's a different format, yes, but there's an ABC permit for those. There's an ABC permit for the convenience stores that sell beer, wine. There's, yeah, there's, anybody handling it and selling it has to have a permit. And somebody's got to be assigned to that permit that's responsible for the actions of their employees. Yeah. Anything else? I mean, I mean, what would you like to, I mean, I know.
I was asking because I didn't know, and evidently, a lot of other people don't know. So, I thought, you know, this would be a good chance for us to discuss it, and that way, the public will know too.
Is that, was the one that brought this to attention, was, was that Appalachian, right on the corner?
That was the one, all the others were already in place. You know, when I came into office, and that was the new one that came up. And all I know is ten penny disappeared one day, and the next thing I know, I'm reading on Facebook that there's a brewery coming. And I thought, well, I didn't know anything about it. And people ask, and I tell them, you know, I don't know. I learned about it on Facebook.
Yeah, then that ABC permit, just so you know, is one of the final things they'll get. Because they have to get their building and all and safety checked off before they can even, I can even sign it.
Would it be feasible that when we get one though, that council knows about it, so that when people ask, you know, we don't have to say, well, I don't know, look on Facebook?
Potentially, you could do that, but I would say that somebody could come in here and pull a permit to build a restaurant, and then at the last minute decides. So, you know, you could, you could get excited, you know, you could get surprised that way. Is that a fair statement? They could start out as one thing, and then decide they're gonna, at the end?
And that's why Appalachian Mountain Brewery was, I guess, difficult from my perspective, because when I originally got the permit, it was just for a commercial building addition. I, no one let me know what the use was. It was only months later when they got a zoning verification letter that they asked, you know, they wanted it in writing, would a taproom be allowed at that location? And then, that gets into another topic, even though it's owned by a brewery, technically, per our zoning code, it's a restaurant. Because they, I think they're the only, well, besides Sierra Nevada, they're the only beverage, alcoholic beverage facility that has a full kitchen. You know, Mills River Brewing and Bold Rock have the food trucks, even though they're semi-permanent. And again, so Appalachian Mountain Brewery has a full kitchen, a large taproom, and then an outdoor area. So, and I just say that, so if council does want to do stuff with the zoning code, just be aware of that. That, that's the category they would fall into under our code right now.
So, one, one thing that I've discussed with, with Mike moving forward is if, if we do get an application, and we know it's a brewery, for example, like it says, you know, Mills River Brewery on it, just as an example, we can let council know that, because those don't happen every day. And that's an easy notification, that we can send in an email, and a weekly update or something.
Send a weekly update, be fine.
Yeah, and, and I'll say that it is, but the example you gave, Mr. Mayor, is very accurate. You know, in my previous position, we would often have retail establishments come in, you know, they were going to just do downtown merchants. And like, oh, wait, we can sell wine, dude, what a great idea.
I think that's exactly what happened here. The, the one that bought that and started it, then got approached by them to, let's do this with it.
Right.
Before you get any further along.
Very well could have been.
Thanks for what happened. Absolute, yeah.
Can I open up Jacey's Brewery? I'm not going to do, but, and then turn it into a ABC store and start selling hard liquor? Is that another ABC permit?
ABC. Entirely different process.
Yeah, totally, it's controlled by the county, correct?
I don't know that, actually.
It is not. Fletcher.
Yeah, they're all owned by, they're all managed by municipalities within the state. There's a separate board that's set up. We don't have, we're not set up to have an ABC store in Mills River right now, but it, I'm sorry, go ahead. So, that could happen, but it wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to open up a brewery, and then, you know, on Friday, decide you're going to be an ABC store, and on Monday, start selling liquor.
And we did look into years ago, the town having an ABC store, and the state regulates proximity to other stores and projected volume, and we would not have done that. Their concern was the proximity, the Fletcher one, and the one.
The physical forest.
The physical forest.
Okay, exactly. Anything else on that? Okay, I'll move on to staff updates. No report, wow. Uh, Arlie, you got me something?
Well, if you've, if you've been in the office or called in the afternoons, you'll, you'll have realized that we have a new face on our front office. Kristen Rintul started a little over two weeks ago. She's taken tax payments, she's answering tax questions, routing phone calls to the proper people. Started, what, picnic shelter rental forms and all kinds of other stuff.
Zoning permits.
Taking permits, taking payments for permits, and yeah, we're, we're very happy to, to have her. She filled that part-time position that was vacated in February.
Good.
Other than that, we've made a small start at the end of August on our, on our two thousand twenty-three taxes. The bills were only out for a couple of weeks, a week shorter than last year. So, it was just a small start, but I'm hoping to catch up soon.
It will.
And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Nicole, Parks and Rec?
Just a few things real quick. So, we have our next movie night, September thirtieth, we're playing Guardians of the Galaxy. So, hopefully, everyone will come out and have a great turnout. That's also our family camping night. So, we'll have forty families that'll come for the movie, pop their tents, and stay in the park for s'mores after. So, it should be a really fun night. Also, we have our blood drive next Friday, eleven o'clock, right here in Town Hall. So, we still got some spots, so people can register for that. Good news is that all our plumbing is fixed in our restroom building. So, the Hickory Shelter restrooms are now open and available for use. We still do have some winterizing work to do, but the plumbing's working right now, and we'll continue on making sure this winter, we won't have any issues there. Other than that, our grading project is well underway, and we should see grass seed going tomorrow and hope for some nice grass-growing weather. And then, other than that, starting probably early next week, people should get some postcards in their mailbox about our public survey for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for the new property. So, we'll have that on our website. Every Mills River resident and property owner should get a, a, a postcard with a link to the website in their mailbox. And then, anybody can go online, or we'll have paper versions that people can come into Town Hall and do that. So, everybody should just be on the lookout for that.
All right, Mr. Malchuk, you got anything?
Just a couple of minor items. Just wanted to make counsel where the Board of Adjustment is going to be considering a very similar minor special use permit for a shopping center. There was one that was pulled from the June meeting, the applicant withdrew at the last minute. This is a new applicant, a new development group, very similar project. So, again, that's going before them, October tenth. I'm sure some of you have seen at the, on the meeting online, but the planning board started the process of a lighting ordinance text amendment. So, at our last meeting, we reviewed a bunch of different example ordinances. And our next meeting, October third, we're going to start presenting some draft text and still have some discussions about that, because that's in the beginning phases. Separate from the discussion tonight, but staff has initiated a text amendment regarding the town's special use permit procedures. So, again, not directing multifamily developments or specific development types out of special use permits to conditional zoning. But one of the things we've struggled with is, for some reason, special use permits required registered mail public notice, which is almost fifteen dollars a letter. Or, so, as an example, for the minor special use permit for the shopping center, I think we charged three hundred and fifty dollars. We're spending three hundred dollars just on letters. We don't require that for any other public notice mailing, so I'm suggesting we go back to first-class mail. But there are other things in the special use permit process that just need to be cleaned up a bit. So, that's one that staff's going to be moving forward. I did want to report that I haven't received the permit or the plans yet, but the, I did get an email this week with one of the environmental studies for the county cell tower on Forge Mountain, so that project just now is progressing. I believe they have engineered drawings, but again, with cellular towers and us being near an airport, there are just many processes and reviews to get through before they actually submit with us. And then, lastly, as we get into council comments, again, if council wants to direct me to do the text amendment to do multifamily to conditional zoning, just don't forget about that. Thanks.
Daniel, when you get caught up?
I have, I have no further updates.
Okay.
Thank you.
In these council comments, though, how y'all feel about going ahead and directing him to get planning board and everybody on board with the text amendment for the multifamily? Is that how we want to approach it, or?
I'm supportive of it. I don't know if we have to do it in the form of a motion, or we can just ask to see a text amendment.
So, without taking too much time, my, my small brain, give me an example. What that would be fine. I mean, yes.
So.
If we pull in.
So, basically, what I would draft is I would, I would keep the multifamily ordinance where it is in the special provisions section, but I would remove all the reference to the special use permit process and input all the reference to the conditional zoning process we just adopted. I guess one difference is the, the, the plans you look at. So, with the townhomes, they actually went into a little more detail than a normal special use permit applicant would need to. With conditional zoning, again, it's, it depends which process, whether they do the preliminary plan or the fully engineered plan. But we do have a whole list of planned requirements in there. Again, Toba was one we looked at that will be a little different. And again, some of those other variables, building size, you know, size of the building, building bulk, can be up for negotiation. No, four units an acre or less.
Okay. You, is he okay to move forward just by consensus on that one for a text amendment?
Yeah.
Sandra, you good with it? Randy's good, I'm good, James good, Jeff's good. All right, move forward. Any other council comments?
I just want to ask Park Director. The sinks in the new Hickory Shelter, I checked men's yesterday, and one bowl was out of service. I asked them to look at the women's, and one bowl was out.
Yeah.
That's a part steal, or that's a?
It was, and it was fixed today, so everything is fully operational. Yeah, they, when they ordered two parts and one for each sink to do the repairs, and only one came. So, we got one working in each section to get it open, but as of today, everything is fully repaired.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I would like to express my personal thanks, personal thanks to the planning board and to the staff for this conditional zoning text amendment. It's, it goes, or gets approved without a lot of fanfare, but I think it's an important document and really helps the town grow the way it wants to grow. You know, my thanks to them for a, a good document.
Hey, if nothing else, council comment-wise, we would make, need a motion to go into a closed session. And then, who would we want to invite to that? Daniel, and that's it, pretty much it. Are we going to take notes, or we? Okay, Dan's thinking it, okay. That's right, okay. Okay. We need a motion.
We're going into closed session for personnel.
Okay, thank you, Randy, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? You're none, okay. All right, we're in, that way, I got to remember to bring.